Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings, can be found on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate by providing public comment in person. As discussed at the May 27, 2025 council meeting, public comment call-in services will be reinstated via the Zoom audio platform, beginning with our next meeting on June 10. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first one through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the group have about one minute. We've never really gotten there. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available through our AV team in the back of the council chambers. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Mayor Pro Tem Schaaf is absent. Council members Wynn and Ward are attending remotely from abroad. And Councilmember Henkel will join remotely later in the meeting. So there are officially eight council members present? Is that correct on the Zoom? All right. Let's check before I make that statement. Oh, good. So we have eight present. So a quorum of the council is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If a council member is given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to two minutes. MO plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Seeing none, are there any objections to this agenda being approved? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved. First, tonight, we have a proclamation declaring June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ month, Pride Month in Broomfield. Will the representatives here, Sasha Davis, the president and CEO of our Rainbow Broomfield Group, please come up to the podium and meet Councilmember Cohen to accept the proclamation? And thank you for joining us this evening. I'll summarize the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Davis, for your comments. This proclamation affirms that the city and county of Broomfield is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. It's imperative that all people in the community feel valued, physically and psychologically safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. This proclamation affirms Broomfield's commitment to inclusivity and equality for all residents and standing against discrimination and harassment based on sexual orientation or gender identity. Our ongoing dedication to creating a place where diversity is celebrated and where everyone's rights and contributions are honored. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city and county of Broomfield. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. Ordinarily, I prepare remarks before things like this. I did not tonight. And as I was sitting here considering what I wanted to say, I thought about the surprise speech I was asked to give on Saturday, and I think it applies here as well. Nelson Mandela said, "It always seems impossible until it's done. That is what guides me all the way through." Thank you for this. That was it. That was the entire speech. On Saturday, I was talking about volunteer work. And tonight, I think what I actually feel is impossible is the idea that our LGBTQIA+ young people will ever feel safe, truly safe in our society, safe from abuse, safe from being told that they are abominations, simply for existing. But moments like this, things like this, give me hope that, in fact, it is not impossible. Because here in our community, we have adults. We have people in leadership who are willing to stand up and say, "No, you are perfect exactly the way you are. We love you. We accept you, and you deserve to exist." So thank you, Madam Mayor, for doing this yet again and standing with all of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And did you have an event that you wanted to tell us about?
Yes, Saturday, right down there, we will be holding our fifth annual Broomfield Pride Festival. Right behind the library, we will be there from 11 to 3. There will be food trucks, there will be music, and it will be a wonderful day.
Thank you so much for all of the work you put into this. We appreciate you. And we do allow public comments on these proclamations. So if anyone would like to be heard, please make their way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay, hi. My name's Smarz Yadi. I'm in Ward 1, sorry. And I'm an ally of the pride community. I'm standing here today because pride's a very important thing. It's hard in this political climate to feel powerful, but everyone can feel pride in themselves. Several of my friends are part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and they've all experienced harassment, violence, intimidation. And more times than not, they have felt completely powerless. And they've also felt completely voiceless. So pride is just such a meaningful thing because it's an internal feeling of acceptance and value. And I feel that it's important as an ally to stand up and be another voice that says, "Love is love." That LGBTQIA+ rights are human rights, and that everyone should be able to celebrate and feel pride. No one should be discriminated against because, at the end of the day, people are people, and we're all part of the human race. Thank you so much for coming out to show your support and sharing the feeling of pride. Happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sandy Anderson, the Broadlands. Mayor, City Council, City Leadership Staff. I'm so proud of you guys that you are here every week, every day, living the values of inclusivity, living the values of what you say Broomfield is. It is wonderful to see, and I so appreciate your support for pride and for all of those who need to have a little bit of a boost to know that we care about them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Neha Fissaramelli, and I just wanted to echo what everyone else has said before. I was at the pride flag raising yesterday, and I'm here for the proclamation today. And I just wanted to say that I'm really happy to be a part of a community where inclusivity of all people, including those of our LGBTQ+ community, is honored and supported, not just by the Broomfield community at large, but also by our city council. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tina Thomas. I'm Ward 4. I want to echo the thankfulness of all, for all of us here that, I'm speaking for everybody, sorry, that when I look at the history being erased for this community across the board, if you look on websites, the letters have been changed. Tonight, Harvey Milk, who was an upstanding man, first gay mayor of San Francisco, did not live long. His name will now be probably taken off one of the naval destroyers, and another name will be put on it. So thank you for standing for this community and not erasing the people that just want to live and just want to love others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi there, Kathy Knight, Ward 4 as well. Mayor, City Council and staff, thank you so much for all your kind, strong, intelligent leadership, and just ditto to what everybody said. Thanks, I'm so proud of Broomfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any remarks or comments? Well, I am going to share what I shared at the flag raising on Monday. Pride is a time of joy, visibility, and connection, but it's also a time of reflection. We honor the pioneers of the LGBTQ rights movement, those who stood up and spoke out in the face of injustice so that future generations like ours could live with more freedom, dignity, and pride. Here in Broomfield, we believe in fostering a community where everyone feels safe, valued, and welcome, no matter their gender identity or who they love. We are proud to stand with our LGBTQ residents, families, youth, and allies, not just this month, but every day. This month reminds us of the power of community and the importance of inclusion. From our local leaders to our schools, businesses, and neighborhoods, each of us plays a role in creating a Broomfield that reflects the diversity and strength of its people. We've come a long way, but we also recognize there's still a lot of work to do. Pride is not just a celebration. It's a commitment, a commitment to justice, to equity, and to standing up for one another. So let us celebrate boldly, support each other fiercely, and continue building a Broomfield where everyone can live authentically and proudly. Happy Pride Month, Broomfield. Next, under petitions and communications is a proclamation declaring June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Broomfield. Will our representatives please come to the podium to meet Councilmember Cohen? I'm out of sorts without Mayor Pro Tem here, so I have to fill in. And thank you very much for joining us this evening, Director Viling. I'll summarize the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you for comments. Gun violence continues to be a major public health issue in Colorado. In 2023, there were over 1,000 firearm-related deaths statewide, most of them due to suicide. Locally, Broomfield has experienced 35 gun-related deaths since 2019 with a clear need for preventive action. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment established the Office of Gun Violence Prevention in 2022 to help coordinate efforts to reduce gun-related injuries and deaths. These efforts require a public health approach that include data tracking, mental health resources, and community programs. In 2024, the Broomfield Police Department joined with local partners to promote Free Gun Lock Week and continues to provide free gun cable locks to residents. Additionally, Broomfield collaborated with the 17th Judicial District Attorney's Office and Good Samaritan Hospital to distribute hundreds of free gun safes to the community. Together, we are taking steps to promote safety and prevent tragedy. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Prevention Awareness Day in Broomfield. So thank you very much for being here. And I'll pass it over to you, Director Viling.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Once, one again, thank you for issuing this proclamation. It's really important for our community. And I think the important thing to see as we look at the data is the vast majority of firearm-related deaths are due to suicide. And I recently attended a webinar, or I mean, sorry, a summit offered by the Office of Gun Violence Prevention. And really, it's all about getting back down to conversations. How do we have discussions around firearms and what it means in our communities, and more from that prevention message? And there's so much happening in our community with partners, as you saw with the police department and others, that our hope is we can continue to do what we can to prevent firearm-related deaths and continue the progress that's been made across Colorado. Just being very transparent, there was quite a bit of funding and efforts going on at the national level around gun violence. There is some worries of what that's going to look like going forward, but I heard directly from the Director of the Office of Gun Violence Prevention, Colorado's going to continue moving forward on its path. So thank you again for this proclamation.
That's good news. Thank you, Director Viling. And we do allow public comment. So if anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Roxy Jewell in Luckmore. I feel really sorry for the families and everybody that had to go through all the suicide shootings. But we do need to remember that there are very competent people out there that do have guns. Not everybody is bad. And not everybody mentally cannot handle a gun. I have a niece that I would not let her ever have a gun. But that's just me and her, and we both have an understanding. We're a long ways and miles apart from each other, but we talk every day. So I still understand everything that she's going through. She's in California, so it's really a tough place for her to be. She delivers food to people's homes. She's in a tough spot. She always thinks that maybe a gun might help her, and I keep reminding her it won't. So she just, mentally, she cannot handle what the gun has to do. But there's still the people who do have guns that you, or I wish that you would not take their rights away from them when they are good gun owners. There are bad gun owners. But yet, we still have to look out for them. So every day is a gun safety day in this world, not just here, not just in the United States, but in the whole world. So you do have to look over your shoulder an awful lot. I worked outside, out in the public, did stuff late at night, worked downtown Denver. I hate to say it, some of the worst neighborhoods I worked in. And I was always having to look over my shoulder, and there are shootings every day. You don't care one tenth of what happens, but there's shootings every day. So every day is a gun safety day. But don't take it out on the people who are good with their guns. Remember, there is a lot of bad out there. We just have to keep watch of them and hopefully stop all that we can. But don't go after the people who are good with their guns because there may be the only person that may ever protect you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ronnie Crutcher, and I actually live in Westminster. I came today because my son was one of those that committed suicide in 2023, July 25. His name was Cray Crutcher, and he passed away at his father's house in Broomfield. And he was given access to a gun. And he committed suicide. He had mental issues. He was... So he died at my ex-husband's house. And he was, my ex-husband was told to get the guns out of the house by my son's therapist, and he refused to do so, and he was out of town. And my son asked for access to the gun, and my ex-husband gave him the code. And I'm here today. It's been a difficult year and a half to deal with this. My son is buried at Broomfield Common Cemetery. And I'm glad that you're doing this proclamation. My issue is that the gun access laws were not followed by the Broomfield Police. I've been working with the Gabby Giffords Foundation, and we wrote a letter to the Broomfield Police to please enforce the gun access laws because my son was 17, and he was not to be given access to guns. So that's why I'm here today. And I appreciate the city of Broomfield doing this type of proclamation to bring light to suicides in this community.
You so much for sharing your story. Anyone else like to be heard?
One, I want to express my sympathy for your loss. We at Moms Demand Action and the Wear Orange Committee here in the state hear these stories, and this is why we speak, not because we are anti-gun. In fact, many of us are gun owners. However, what we do want is to encourage everyone to store safely and to recognize that we're not all in the same place at the same time when it comes to our capability of being responsible with a gun. So June 6 is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. It's a day that we ask people to remember the victims and the survivors still remaining who have been impacted by gun violence. We wear orange, just as hunters wear orange for safety. We ask you on June 6 to wear orange to honor the survivors and the victims and be in community with them. Each year in the United States, as you said, there are 45,000 people who die from gun violence. And in Colorado, it's 14 gun deaths per 100,000 people. Most importantly, from my perspective, is that 4.6 million children live in homes with guns that are loaded and unlocked. Anyone who has lived in a home with children know that they can get into many, many things. And having a weapon that can cause an irrevocable damage to another is just absurd to me. And so frequently, people like myself at Moms Demand Action are considered people who want to take away guns. We merely want to ask that everyone is safe with them. So we thank the city of Broomfield and the city and county of Broomfield for recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we appreciate this proclamation that you're considering. For those in the audience, we ask you to remember the victims and survivors. And on June 6, please wear orange. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard on this item? If not, I'll move to our council colleagues. Does anyone on council have any comments or remarks? All right. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening for this important proclamation. June 6, wear orange. Thank you all. Does any member of the council have any reports or updates this evening? Anybody online? Nope. Was that a yes? Councilmember Marshfulsion.
I just wanted to let the public know that on July, or sorry, June 12, two Thursdays from now, myself, Councilmember Wynn, and Mayor Castro will be holding a Ward 1 Town Hall at 6:00 PM at Rails and Beer Company over in, off of Main Street. So anybody in Ward 1 or anybody really that wants to come talk about the issues with us is welcome. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council member updates? I do want to give a shout out because this Thursday, June 5, the Palisade Park Amphitheater is having its first free concert. It's a brand-new venue that, to help, you know, activate the Nobro area, North Broomfield. And the farmer's market that used to be at Holy Comforter is moved up there. So check it out this Thursday. There'll be free concerts all summer. I think it starts around 4:00. So it's next to the Children's Hospital, if that helps. So check that out. We want the farmer's market to be successful up there in its new location. So tell your friends, and hopefully we'll have good weather. Thank you very much. We'll now continue with the report section of the agenda. City and County Manager Hoffman, do you have a report?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Attorney Rogers, do you have a report?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. Item... Oh, did I just pass that up? I apologize, y'all. I breezed right by it. We'll now continue with public comment. So this is general public comment, an opportunity for you to comment on matters other than the items already listed on this evening's agenda. So if you would like to be heard, please come up to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name's Bill Cruthers from Northmore. Mayor, absent Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and staff. I just have a couple things. Number one, I went to the Second Enterprise Academy this last Saturday. It was fantastic. It was the Public Utilities Department. And they had setups where you could look down in the hole, see what kind of pipes they have to fix, how they fix things, how they, when they have to go down and do a sewer line, how they check for the chemicals first. I mean, they were all out there, the whole group. It lasted for two hours, and they did a fantastic job. And I wish people would go to more of these. There's eight sessions total, I believe. The next one is on the wastewater treatment plant on 124th, if anybody's interested. They're usually on Saturdays from like 9:00 to 11:00. And they just did a great job. I really appreciate that. The second thing is, you know, we've all seen that the, there was really no response to the land where the First Bank Center was. I wish we would have talked to the Butterfly Pavilion and maybe got them to move in there. It would have been right on 36. It would have been a fantastic place for them to move. I'm sorry that that whole thing kind of fell apart, but that would have been a wonderful place to have the new Butterfly Pavilion, such as it is.
Thank you very much for the feedback. Anyone else?
Hi, Kim Tuisinipansai, Outlook. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City staff. I was just curious about what is happening with Eagle Trace Golf Course. I know that it's privately owned. I heard today that apparently the water rights for that golf course have been sold by the owner like 10 years ago to somebody in Lafayette. And the, that, and then he's been buying him back, and that agreement is coming to an end in November, which means that tract of land will have no water rights. And I'm just, and I, I know that the neighborhoods around the golf course have been involved in meetings, and nobody knows what's going to happen. And of course, I don't live right there, but I drive by it all the time. And so I'm just wondering, you know, if the city has any stake in what's happening with that tract of land or, or any plans to, you know, to make sure that things come out in, you know, hopefully in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest talking to either, which ward are you in, Kim? Talk to your councilmember, Lim. She'll fill you in. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Hunter Harris. I'm a resident here in Broomfield. Excuse me for a second. I, and, you know, in the spirit of inclusivity, I stand before you to propose a practical and lawful initiative to support some of our most committed committee, uh, community members. These individuals own homes, run businesses, and contribute to Broomfield's growth, yet face hurdles in completing their legal documentation toward citizenship and residency. As Cesar Chavez wisely said, "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community." Just as the fight for farmworkers wasn't about grapes or lettuce, but about people, our initiatives, our initiative is about the people behind progress in Broomfield. With the upcoming construction in Interlochen and throughout the city, we must remember the true foundation of growth is people, families who want to contribute and grow along with the city. By directing some of Broomfield's resources to assist them, we ensure that our future development... development is built on strong, united community, all within the framework of the law. Let's show that Broomfield supports all its residents, fostering a stronger, more cohesive community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Now, moving on to the consent agenda. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. Item 6A is a Board of Equalization item, and as a reminder, council is the Board of Equalization, so a vote by council on this is a vote of the BOE. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 6A through 6C by title?
6A, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-83, BOE for the adoption of a hearing officer recommendation for an abatement petition. 6B, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-86, approving Google Fiber Master License Agreement, Fiber to Home. 6C, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-96, acknowledging Broomfield's a broadband-ready certified community by the Colorado Broadband Office in the Governor's Office of Information Technology.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to speak on these items, now's the time. All right, seeing none, does any member of council have any comments or questions on these agenda items? Councilmember Lim.
On 6B, I realized that the memo mentions, and we've been through various revocable permits, approvals, and this is going to a master license agreement now. I was concerned about the amount of time that this is taking staff and if we are receiving any fees in this process to handle this administrative effort. I mean, this, these are certainly lucrative businesses who have a lot of possibilities in gaining customers in Broomfield.
Mr. Dever. And you're right, councilmember Lim, thank you for acknowledging that. It's been extraordinarily time-consuming.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Appreciate the question. Through the agreement process, we are not receiving any fees. We do, at this stage, will move to construction permits with each of the companies, and through that process, we do receive permit fees.
Okay. So, I mean, does staff feel like we are recouping our administrative costs at all? Or is there anything, is there anything that we could do to, to address if we are not recouping our administrative cost? Since this is, this is a new effort, obviously, we're, we've never, you know, had to address this, these license agreements before.
I'd say, I think creating the new agreements, it's consistent with how we operate with other projects as well. There are not typically fees associated with creating new agreements. So I'd say it's just consistent across how we operate.
Councilmember Lim, and I will add, seasonally throughout the year, council will receive messages, as does staff, about not having great connection, or speeds being low, or gaps of services. And this is how we remove or marginalize or minimize those ongoing complaints. So while we will not see dollar-for-dollar for the amount of time and effort that it takes, and to your point, given that it's new for us, the process itself is new for us, will get better, will become more agile. And given that the 34 square miles we've been working on broad-based broadband for eight years now, so we're coming, I don't want to say close to the end, but it really is a community service and economic development driver for us. Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, is there a motion by council that consent items 6A through 6C be approved? Councilmember Dugadio.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I just want to congratulate our IT department on that designation, so way to go. Good job. Sorry. All right, so then council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Winn, please state your vote verbally.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes eight to zero. Thank you all very much. The first item under action items this evening is the public hearing in council and boroughs consideration of resolutions related to a Genesis dealership at 4101 Industrial Lane. These two items will be reviewed concurrently with one staff presentation. Before we proceed, we will convene a meeting of the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority. The meeting of the Broomfield Urban Renewal Authority is called to order. I'll note that all members of the authority are present with the exception of borough members Henkel, Law Evans, and Goldstein. Members Winn and Ward are attending remotely. I'll note, I'll now declare the public hearing open. We'll follow the city's standard public hearing procedures. First, staff will present a summary of the proposal. Next, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Then we'll ask for public comments and final comments from the applicant, and finally questions from city council members and borough members. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, mayor. And introducing this item to us will be Lynn Merwin, Deputy Director of Community Development for Planning. Ms. Merwin.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, mayor, council, and if we have borough here this evening, good evening to you all. Next slide, please. The property owner, Cars DB4 LP, and the applicant, Adragna Architecture, I'm sorry if I butchered that, and development are requesting consideration of approval of an application comprising three plan sets, including a final plat, a planned unit development plan, and a combined site development plan, urban renewal site plan, and use by special review for a new automobile sales and service center. The subject site is located at 4101 Industrial Lane, north of US 36 and approximately 0.7 miles east of the Flatiron BRT station. Next slide, please. The Broomfield Comprehensive Plan, land use designation designates this property for industrial uses, and the application is consistent with this designation. Next slide. There are a couple of key land use overlays that apply to this property that I'll review quickly to provide important context for the review of this application. In 1991, the then-city council adopted an ordinance authorizing the interchange influence area, or IIA for short, as a zoning overlay that applies to properties in the vicinity of US 36 and the Interlock and Loop interchange to the west. This overlay includes a range of prohibited uses, which includes auto sales and services. It also includes design criteria related to setbacks and landscape buffers. Next slide. Oh, nope, sorry, stay here. I'm changing my page. In 2013, the then-city council adopted the US 36 Urban Renewal Area and the Urban Renewal Area Plan, which established a second overlay for properties bordering US 36 and including the subject property. The URA specified that auto sales and service uses are considered a permitted use subject to use by special review approval. Thus, the multi-part named site plan this evening. The property is currently zoned PUD without a PUD plan. The PUD zoning allows an applicant to propose custom zoning for a given property through a PUD plan, which requires review and approval through a public hearing before you all. The PUD plan is one of three plans you are considering this evening. If approved, this plan will allow an auto sales and service dealership on the property. The proposed plans further customize other design standards for the development, such as setbacks and landscape buffers. Next slide. In addition to the PUD plan, this request is for consideration of a final plat, which establishes the legal lot lines and easements, as well as the combined site development plan, urban renewal site plan, and use by special review that collectively depict the specific improvements associated with the automobile dealership. And so you can see a color graphic representing the site improvements on the screen. More specifically, the application proposes a 27,200-square-foot building to be situated at the northeast side of the lot. The new development will be accessed via Industrial Lane to the south. Landscaping is interspersed throughout the site. The stormwater detention pond is shown at the northwestern side of the property. The automobile inventory will be stored to the northwest of the building. The site plan also includes a brief operations plan specific to the automobile sales and service facility at this location, and I'll refer to the applicant, defer to the applicant to address this. Next slide. This slide depicts the proposed architecture. The plans indicate the building will feature a high-quality matte textured two-story glazing with a non-glare, low reflective coating. The public entrance is oriented to the southwest towards US 36 and Industrial Lane. The service functions are planned toward the rear of the building. The building height of 25 feet complies with the maximum allowed in the district, which is 40 feet. Next slide, please. Okay. This slide addresses the proposed variances. The PUD plan proposes three types of variances from that interchange influence area overlay. The first pertains to the use, which if, which is proposed to permit the automobile sales and service use, subject to approval of a use by special review. And I would note that while the use requires a variance from the IIA overlay, as I mentioned, it is consistent with the provisions of the later adopted Urban Renewal Area Plan, also an overlay. The second variance pertains to reduced setbacks. All perimeter setbacks are proposed to be reduced for parking from a minimum of 30 feet to between one foot and 10 feet at a minimum for certain locations around the site. These are described in detail in the staff report for this case. The third variance pertains to reduced landscape buffers, and these are associated with the reduced setback variances. The applicant, applicant notes that the variances are requested due to the irregularly shaped lot and the prior conveyance of certain land along Industrial Lane frontage to Broomfield for a CIP trail, a trail project. I would say the applicant has also noted that while the landscape buffers are reduced, the proposed development will still exceed the minimum required private open area requirement of 25% of the site. Private open area in this application includes landscaped areas and walkways. Next slide, please. This slide references the standards for review and approval as they apply to the final plat, the planned unit development, the site development plan, the urban renewal site plan, and the use by special review. The full list is, sorry, next slide. Okay, thank you. Resolutions number 2025-91 and 2025-92, URA, set forth the draft findings for city council and the urban renewal authority to consider with respect to this application. This slide provides an excerpt of those findings, and the full list is provided in the respective resolutions accompanying the agenda memorandum for this application. Next slide. In October of 2023, city council reviewed the concept plan for this application during a study session and indicated general support for the proposed use. In April of 2024, the applicant hosted the required neighborhood meeting prior to submitting the formal development application you're considering this evening. On April 28th of this year, the Land Use Review Commission held a public hearing concerning the proposal and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed development with no conditions. Public notice requirements have been met via mailed, posted, and published notices for this hearing. Next slide, please. Staff has not identified any key issues for this application, and the proposed resolutions have approved, would approve the automobile sales and service uses set forth in these three plan sets comprising this application. This concludes my presentation, and I believe we have news here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Merwin. Yes, the, next is the applicant presentation. I ask you to identify yourselves for the record and begin your presentation.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present our project to you tonight. My name is Casey Adronia with Adronia Architecture and Development. And yeah, just briefly, just speaking to it, as mentioned, we did present this in a concept review in 2023, and very similar to what was presented that evening, the only difference is instead of a Hyundai dealership, it's a Genesis dealership, which is a part of the same kind of parent company. So, all right, next, next slide, please. Just a brief note about the ownership group. It's Planet Automotive, of which I have Lee and Tyler here with me today, and they'll be able to answer any specific questions as far as ownership goes. But they are a local group, very invested, family-owned business, and invested in the local area. Next slide, please. A lot of this has already been touched on by staff, but it's on a 3.3-acre site just north of Highway 36, between 287 to the south and Interlock and Loop to the north. 27,200-square-foot proposed building with 62, 61 customer and employee parking spaces and 86 vehicle inventory parking spaces. And once, once completed, it's expected to employ approximately 50 people. A little bit more on operations plan. In general, the, the timeframe for business operation would be approximately 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. Next slide, please. Just a little more graphics on the area's context. Next slide, please. This one's just showing a little bit of, of the similar context. We have the Siltahar dealerships to the southeast, and then the Flatiron dealerships to the northwest. Next slide, please. Then the immediate context, we have Conscious Alliance directly, our neighbor directly to the south, and then two storage facilities further down that way. Next slide, please. Showing some of the massing in the area, some, some taller buildings, so, you know, I certainly believe that the massing of, of the new dealership would fit in with the context of the adjacent proximity. Next slide, please. There's a site plan. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is the landscape plan, and as staff had mentioned previously, it is somewhat of a unique-shaped site. There's not much parallel or square about the site. But in a lot of ways, I do think that this created a good opportunity for the particular dealership use. One being that the inventory parking, which is what you can see kind of on the north side of the site, that's set back significantly from industrial way due to a C dot detention pond there that is, that is along Industrial Lane as well. So rather than a lot of typical dealerships where you'll see a large sea of parking, open parking lots, that's not the case with this. And even the, the largest parking area that we do have is significantly broken up by a linear landscape island that actually splits that. So we truly have no continuous parking within the site, which gave us the opportunity and allowed us to be able to intersperse landscaping throughout the site. Next slide, please. Again, just touching on the architecture. Again, this is, this is really developed through the Genesis brand, but again, if we've, if you've seen any of these newer Genesis facilities, they are very elegant and really very nice buildings and architecture with glass facades, ACM above. And yeah, I think it'll just give a very nice presence along 36. Next slide, please. There's some other additional renderings. Next slide, please. And this is more prototypical Genesis, just gives a little more realistic take on what the, the actual architecture will look like. Next slide, please. And that, that concludes my presentation specifically to our dealership. One item I do want to touch on that has been very refreshing has been our experience with Broomfield staff, particularly Judy Hammer. She's been just fantastic to work with, and I will say very unique, unfortunately, and refreshing relative to a lot of other municipalities. It truly felt like we were teammates, working towards a common goal, strategizing to, you know, there's always going to be hurdles and challenges. strategizing to, you know, there's always going to be hurdles and challenges with any of these projects. And I just truly felt like Broomfield staff and Judy was was always there as a resource to try to strategize and creatively work through the project. So I just want to say it was just amazing working with with the city up to this point. Thank you.
Love to hear that. Thank you so much for the presentation. I will now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please make your way to the podium.
Roxy Jula Lockmar. This is in my neighborhood, basically. This area, as was mentioned years ago, had a problem with the fact that it's low. So filter has to be brought in or has to be built up or somehow that has to be leveled off. And I know there's going to be a detention pond, but you got to have your property has to be higher than that detention pond. And the area right now is about all low. So my problem is, is when the trucks come in with the dirt or the rock or whatever they're going to use and in general building, that area can get really muddy. And we do have a trail area that's right there. And we don't need the mud to be across that. And we don't need the mud coming back into the Broomfield main city corridor. I would like to make sure that the mud either goes west, but the trucks going west, coming from the west, if they're bringing the loads in, they can go back out to the west and go down the industrial lane to leave the area. And plus, we don't need those really extremely heavy trucks. We have enough heavy stuff going down industrial lane now. And that road is becoming terrible. Between the potholes, people weaving to not hit them and then going across the middle of the lane and stuff like that and into the other lane sometimes. That road's getting pretty dangerous. So I I just want that caution. I'm all for this going in. Don't get me wrong. I'm all for it. I'm just a little bit worried about the road and the truck traffic and all the mud because I know what happens in the spring or anytime, even if it rains or even if it snows. That's all clay. And it gets slippery, muddy, and it's just not any good. And this is what I said last time too, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to comment? All right, I'll go to questions from council and Borough next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. Does any member of council Borough have any questions? Councilmember Lim.
Okay, I think the industrial lane is actually in another ward, but Ms. Jule is my constituent, so I will ask someone to address her question. What would be the plan to for the truck routes for heavy trucks during construction?
Yeah, it is is absolutely a valid concern for sure. I will say with where we are in the process, we have not gone into civil construction documents just yet. Civil construction documents would really outline, we've done prelim preliminary grading plans. Thankfully, I understand what you're saying to where it does feel very low. It is a relatively balanced site, which means that within the dirt that is onsite, we're going to be able to basically rework the grade to elevate the building for drainage. Some of that is, you know, we have to dig out the detention pond. A lot of that dirt can then be placed for the building pad to elevate that building. So one would be to minimize the the importing or exporting of dirt on the site. I do believe we're very close to balance, but again, that will be more specifically worked out during the civil construction document phase, as will the erosion and sediment control plan, which is specifically prescribed by the city of Broomfield, which would really talk about traction control to where all entries and exits from the site will have significant traction. You know, which would help eliminate a lot of that dirt being tracked on to industrial lane. The other, the other piece of that is, you know, it's in the development's interest to eliminate mud as quickly as possible. So just in the same light that, you know, we don't want mud tracking in and out of industrial lane. That's very true to the site's constructability as well. So I would say that one of the top priorities is with the site work is to grade it. And then once we as quickly as possible get that first lift down of asphalt, that that then will have a significant impact to help eliminate dirt being tracked in and out of the site. Typically, and for the fire department purposes as well, that's actually a requirement. Before we go vertical with the building, we actually have to have that first lift of all of the pavement down on the site before we can even go vertical with the building. And that's so that the fire department can, you know, during construction, if there were to be a fire or issue, the fire department would be able to have full access to around our site very early on during construction and before the building goes vertical. So I do believe that will will help a lot as well with with tracking dirt onto industrial lane.
So that's great. You're going to minimize that dirt. Can staff address what do we usually do if we get reports that construction site is causing a lot of mud or debris on our trails? What do we usually do with that report? Thanks.
Matthew Dever, City and County Engineer. So the Public Works Department has Stormwater Division within it. Any complaints we receive, we forward to the Stormwater Division. They have regular inspections on sites as well. They will then forward that to the contractor that's listed on the MS four state permit. If the the situation is not remedied, then there could be violations issued. But typically with projects, they'll go out, they'll clean the road, they'll do what they need to do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. I wanted to review what the bike way and the time rate timeframe for its construction. The memo seemed to imply that the construction of the bike way be interrupted by this project construction. And I remember when this was bike was being planned like five years ago and reviewing it and open space. So I know it's long awaited, but I'm just curious what impact this has.
Thank you for the question. The the two projects will need to be coordinated. The, you know, it's hard for us to predict exactly when a developer, private developer is going to start construction. Our capital improvement program will start construction of this trail once the contract is approved. It's in the out for bid right now. And that work will begin, and then it will need to be coordinated with the timing of this project. And and that's pretty typical for what we look at in construction document review. So I am not terribly concerned about it. It is a fairly long run and so the the phase two of the trail. So it could be staged so that if there are conflict periods, we can work around that.
Do you think there'll be a delay in the completion date for the trail? Or it can be still completed on time?
So I'll take a stab at replying for our capital improvement program, but they're aware of this application and they have factored this development into that that contract. So I I think that they they realize that whatever happens with this project, it will need to be coordinated. And, you know, I can't say for sure that it won't be delayed, but the timing is provided by the project manager for the capital improvement project, and she is aware of this development proposal.
It sounds like the answer is yes. I don't know if there's a way that we can expedite the trail or ensure there's no interruption. I mean, it's not a safe place to bike unless there's a trail.
We can pass it on to.
It would be nice not to have, and I'm sure you don't want to be an impediment to improving this trail project, which, as I said, has been long awaited and will be really terrific to have completed. So if there's a way to not have a long delay or interruption, if that's possible, that would be preferred. Thank you.
Ms. Allen is making her way down.
Thank you very much.
Katie Allen, Director of Community Development. Councilmember Cohen, hopefully I'm following the question. So construction, construction start hasn't been delayed. We just recently got our clearances and we are up for bid. And I have not personally heard of any concerns with coordination or delay in the schedule from this.
I was just reading the memo. It sounded like the construction of the bike way could be stopped for a while to complete the dealership and then resumed. That's what my reading was, and it sounds like from the answer, you guys are going to have to, you're going to be in the area at the same time. So my question is, is there a way to expedite maybe the trail so people can still use it or use it finally while they do the finish work on the building, et cetera? If there's just some way to avoid a long delays is what it sounded like in the memo that there could be.
I will make sure the project manager knows the concern and we don't, we don't want to put a hold on the contractor anyway. So we usually do everything we can to keep it going.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. The only, I have a follow up question kind of related to Councilman Cohen's inquiry about the bike trail. For I guess both the applicant and staff, are we using any sort of traffic calming measures to ensure that when people turn either into the property or out of the property onto industrial lane? That there's kind of the the visual and physical feeling that pedestrians and bikes on that trail, excuse me, are protected such as using like kind of an elevated path or sound like sharper turns, anything like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And being that we have not entered into the civil construction document phase yet, I think incorporating some form of differentiation for that bike trail that's going to cross the entryway to our development is very important. Whether it be, you know, a small sign, you know, I guess we will take that into account. And, you know, I think it's a very good point as far as safety goes from people turning in and out of the dealership, not just looking for other motor vehicles, but also pedestrians and bicycle traffic as well, which which, you know, it's a great path. So there's going to, hopefully it's going to be well trafficked. So just making sure that that's a safe intersection is is very important.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. One last question is relating to the kind of the site itself. I didn't notice much in the way of kind of environmental or sustainability initiatives, other than what is required in code for parking spaces that are E V ready and E V capable, et cetera. Were there any other initiatives such as using solar panels, water reduction techniques, either in irrigation or facilities onsite?
Yeah, that's another great question. And I will say the the benefit of the increased energy code as well as Broomfield's electric ready codes that that require certain amount of E V stations. You know, that that standard has been set very high. And I would say on the energy efficiency side as well, code wise, you know, to where it's just a no brainer more anymore that that all all plumbing fixtures are low flow, low flow water, all all light fixtures are L E D, of course. All of the the building envelope components have a very high rating of, you know, insulation value. The glass is extremely well as far as heat gain and whatnot as well. Again, as we get into the building construction document phase two, that's where, you know, talking with our electrical engineer to potentially see if if solar is an option as well is something that will be evaluated in that process for sure. But yeah, great question for sure.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff also hitting on the exact same theme. Do we have statistics for collisions on industrial lane? Is that place fairly safe? I'm specifically thinking so the reason that what sparked this is kind of similar to what other folks are saying. Point four miles southwest or southeast of this location, there's that crossing across industrial lane for that bike and pedestrian path. And I use that a lot and I, you know, worry if we're going to have some heavier vehicles around here, that just increases the danger.
Lynn Merwin. No, we don't have that level of detail available this evening. I'm sorry. We just didn't anticipate that that level of detail, sorry.
That's all right. Just asked a very specific question. I'm good. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? All right, there being no further questions. The public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine one. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed resolution number twenty twenty five dash ninety one approving Brainerd B replat B forty one oh one industrial lane, planned unit development plan, final plat site development plan, urban renewal site plan and use by special review.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution by title? Councilmember Leslie.
I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Delgado.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll move, we'll move forward to the vote on resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine one. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Win, please state your vote verbally.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen momentarily. That passes unanimously eight to zero. Thank you all, gentlemen, and thank you ladies for being with us tonight. Welcome. But we're not done. Next is Borough's consideration of proposed resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine two dash U R. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine two dash U R approving the Brainerd B replat B forty one oh one industrial lane urban renewal site plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution by title? Councilmember Leslie.
I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Hultzen.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the vote on resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine two dash U R. Borough members, please cast your vote electronically. Authority Member Win, please state your vote verbally.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Authority Member Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. In a sec, I'm guessing it's going to pass the same. Yeah, eight to zero unanimously. So thank you all very much. Next under action items this evening is the proposed resolution amending the I G A between the Mile High Flood District and the City and County of Broomfield for the Nissan Reservoir Channel Concrete Trail Project. Also, item seventy is proposed resolution number two oh two twenty twenty five dash seven seven, amending the I G A between the Mile High Flood District and the City and County of Broomfield for the City Park Channel at Main Street Improvements. We'll consider both items concurrently. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandums, which I'll ask our staff to summarize both agenda items seven C and seven D.
Thank you, Marin. It has now become the Matthew Dever Show. Deputy Director of Community Development of Engineering, Mr. Dever.
Thanks, Manager Hoffman. So I want to present to you today, as you mentioned, both, there are two items that we're discussing. I G A amendments for both the Nissan Reservoir Channel project as well as the Main Street, Main Street City Park Channel project. As you'll see from the presentation, the reason we are combining these two is both the funding and construction timing of these projects are intertwined. They're both very large projects. I include multiple years of allocating funds in order to move them forward. Next slide, please. I'll begin with a brief description about the Mile High Flood I'll begin with a brief description about the Mile High Flood District, how they receive funds from Broomfield residents, how those funds are allocated to different projects by the Mile High Flood District, and then the benefits that Broomfield receives from those funds. So all residents in Broomfield that live south of Colorado seven are within the Mile High Flood District boundary, therefore they pay a mill rate of 0.9. Those funds are then distributed between generally three different types of projects with the Mile High Flood District. They're listed here on this graphic. Studies which can include research and development, master planning and floodplain hazard area delineations. Another classification of project are maintenance projects, which include flood warning, floodplain preservation. And then the third classification is a CIP project. Those are, of course, CIP projects through Broomfield as well and floodplain management projects. The funds are generally split between these different types of projects with CIP projects generally taking more of the funding because they are the, the larger projects that are constructed. For all three of these, the funds that are spent are allocated to these different projects from Broomfield residents. We receive 100% back benefit from those for within Broomfield. So those funds are spent on projects within Broomfield's boundary. I also want to note that for studies and maintenance projects, those are 100% funded by the Mile High Flood District, while CIP projects require a 50% match from Broomfield CIP. Next slide, please. So looking at the two different projects, we'll start with the Nissan Reservoir Channel Project. You see on the map here, the full scope extends from just west of Lowell Boulevard, continues kind of west northwest direction where it ends within the Country Vista subdivision just to the northeast of the Walmart along 120th. In 2016, Broomfield entered into an IGA with the Mile High Flood District for the Nissan Channel Drainage Corridor Improvements. With rising inflation, it was determined or decided that the project be split into two phases. The first phase shown in the cyan color on the map extending from Lowell Boulevard west to just north of the property that was previously a Shelley Garden Center. And then the phase two continuing where phase one left off to the northwest to the Country Vista subdivision. It's also important to note that while this project is primarily drainage improvements, it does also include a community trail that will connect to the existing trails within the Country Vista subdivision, continuing to the east where it connects to the existing Lowell Boulevard pedestrian underpass that then connects to the Metzger Open Space just to the east of Lowell. Funding contributions from the Wasatch Property Developer, that property is shown in gray here, and also from the open space and trails department have positively impacted the project's schedule. Next slide, please. Looking at the cost and anticipated construction schedule for the project, the current spending to date for phase one is $6.828 million. The amount in the budget is $7.11 million. If resolution 2025-76 is approved, that will be adding an additional $2.278 million to the project. That will leave an outstanding amount of positive $2.56 million. And the intent of that will be, it will get transferred to phase two of this project. The project started construction for phase one in August of 2024 and is anticipated to be completed in July of 2025. So very soon. For phase two, the estimated costs are $4.65 million with the amount in the budget currently will be the 2.56 that's being transferred from phase one. This resolution is not requesting to add any additional funds to phase two at this time. And that will leave an outstanding amount of negative $2.09 million for phase two of the project. So with that, we do anticipate in 2027 and 2028, I'm requesting additional IGA amendments to add funding to this project. The anticipated schedule would be construction starts in 2028 with a duration of approximately 12 months, which is consistent with phase one. Next slide, please. Now we're going to look at the City Park Channel Project. The scope, overall scope of this one is a little bit larger. It begins at the existing pond just west of Spader Way within Community Park. It then continues in the northwest direction, crossing Main Street into Emerald Park. It then crosses Emerald Street into Midway Park South, crossing Midway Boulevard into Midway Park North, where the project ends just to the east of Highway 287. In 2020, it was identified that this channel had structural issues. So at that time, it became a maintenance project with the Mile High Flood District. Because it was a maintenance project, that's the reason IGA was not created, the Mile High Flood District at that time. It's not needed for maintenance projects as we are not allocating any funds to it through Broomfield CIP at that time. So with this project, we will focus a little bit more on the conversation around the section shown in green, which is the Broomfield Town Square Improvements. And then also Reach One, which is really Broomfield's first phase of this project, as well as the initial phase that is shown in red. So the timing for this project is expected to be start construction for the Broomfield Town Square. They have communicated, they anticipate starting in the first half of 2026. In order to coordinate timing with between Broomfield Town Square Project and improvements for the Main Street Underpass, we have prioritized the initial phase shown in red, which is the underpass beneath Main Street. And we want to ensure that that is completed around the same time as the Broomfield Town Square Development Improvements, both for reasons due to just constructability and then also to have that underpass once Broomfield Town Square is developed and completed. As the town square project became a little more certain, we realized that we would have to prioritize that initial phase over Nissan Channel Phase Two. So that's the reason we are presenting these together. And you will see that funding and construction will go back and forth between these two different projects so that we could prioritize the timing of that initial phase. Once the second phase of Nissan Channel is completed, we would come back to the remainder of phase one for the City Park Channel. We do have a conceptual design for that this time. It is not final, but the design intent is to create to, to remove the steep boulder section that exists today and to create a more natural low-flow insinuous channel, which is consistent with design standards today. Next slide, please. Briefly looking at construction costs, anticipated costs and schedule. Current cost for the initial phase is 11.41 or 11.4 million dollars on those design and construction. We currently have 5.9 million dollars in the budget. And if approved, the resolution 2025-77, apologize for the typo, would add an additional $3.62 million to the budget. Will leave us with an outstanding negative 1.88 million dollars. So we do anticipate an additional IGA amendment requested in 2026 to add those additional funds to this project. The anticipated schedule is that construction will start in late 2026 and timing with the Broomfield Town Square Channel Improvements. And we expect it will last approximately 12 months. Next slide, please. In summary, we've kind, we've discussed this already, but the intent is if approved for 20 resolution 2025-76 for the Nissan Reservoir Channel, construction will continue and be completed in July of 2025. Phase two design will continue with the final design anticipated in 2026. However, phase two will not start construction until 2028 because, because we are prioritizing the initial phase of the City Park Channel Improvements for the pedestrian underpass. And again, we do anticipate additional IGA amendments to add funding to this project in 2027 and 2028. City Park Channel Resolution 2025-77, if approved, we would anticipate the design for the initial phase will continue and expected to be completed in early 2026. And then construction to begin late 2026. And we would anticipate one additional IGA amendment in 2026 as well to add additional funds. That is my presentation. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dever. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please make your way to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Roxy Julalakmar. This is gonna take a long time. Some of you are not gonna be around. So please don't leave it up to me to have to remember this. I'm getting too old to do this anymore. So try to make this straight. Remember, put it in black and white so we can find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, staff, thank you for the presentation, all the work that went into this. I don't really have a lot of public comment on this, other than to point out and request City Council in the light of our fiscal uncertainty. Really, there seems to be a lot of future unknown amendments. So I would request that the council members seriously understand the full scale and scope of the entire project. You know, given our fiscal uncertainty in the future, so that we know what our total costs are going to be at the end. And also if phase two of any of these projects might be dependent on others, what those dependencies are and what would it look like if we are unable to fund them at the time of the request? So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, we'll go to questions from council next. Any questions from council? Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It just the usual question is, okay, so what if we don't do this? What are the consequences?
For the City Park Channel, as I mentioned, it was a maintenance project. The existing corridor is, does have structural issues that will continue to erode, which then I would say maintenance costs for Broomfield during that time while we wait, as well as it could be potentially cause additional damage that'd be more expensive to fix in the future. And then the same would be true for phase two of Nissan Channel.
Second question is, you know, floodplain issues where high desert. How important is this, other than what you just spoke about in terms of the maintenance stuff, but how important is this for us? Given the location that we're in?
So the floodplains, they are recognized and identified by FEMA. So I would say they, they meet the same criteria if there's a floodplain within a lower area at lower elevation. So being in a high desert, I would say does not really affect the impact of the importance of the project. We'd still have the same maintenance issues I previously mentioned.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
In looking at the financial breakdown on the memo for the City Park, the financial considerations, the 2025 funds are coming from the sewer fund. We'll have a stormwater fund in 2026. Is that correct? And maybe you're not ready to answer this, but is, is that what we're anticipating that this type of work will come from the stormwater funds eventually?
I would need to talk to other staff about that and follow up.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Just got a couple of questions on both items 7C and 7D. Though as it relates to 7D or C, sorry, with the Nissan Channel over by kind of 121st Perridge Street area. Is the reason for the budget amendment because we experienced cost overruns or as we've been budgeting this project, we really just put enough in to get us through each phase, knowing that this is a multi-year obligation, the planning process?
Yeah, so I would say the amendment that we have today is kind of twofold. One, as you stated, we do add funds to the project, knowing it's multiple phases. We have added funds to the first phase initially. This amendment, the funds that are available and that'll be added to the project have actually come from a contribution from a, an adjacent property owner, the Wasatch Property. I believe they contribute $2 million. And then additional funds that were provided by Broomfield's Open Space and Trails Department. So those funds, they were received. We understood that the developer funds were coming. And so we, as a part of agreement, once those are received, we needed to add those to the project budget. So that's part of the main reason for the amendment today.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna move on to 7D, the City Park Channel. I know it mentioned in the memo that we would seek reimbursement from Broomfield Town Square for the portion of the channel that connects into the pond. I guess my question is, what happens if Broomfield Town Square doesn't move forward at all? They decide they can't financially make the project happen? Does that leave us, though, I assume that leaves us still on the hook to complete the project because we've now started the project and we know that there is an issue with the the structure of the panel anyways?
Yeah, so for the initial phase of the City Park Channel Improvements, that is the pedestrian underpass beneath Main Street. With that improvement, we are lowering, lowering the channel by several feet. So in order for the drainage to still drain to the southeast, as is intended to do, the improvements through the Broomfield Town Square project would be required. We would hope that we would know if the town square project is not moving forward. We are basing our timing and our intent on the, what the developer has communicated to us. They've also shown a positive movement on the way of design, both for the City Park Channel and other improvements they're responsible for. So we, we do anticipate that they will do their portion of the improvements, but if they were not completed by the town square project, then Broomfield would need to do them if we also construct the underpass, the initial phase of the project.
Manager Hoffman?
I was just gonna say, it's, it's important to note that this, this is not an aesthetic fix. This is something that if, if, if any of you are out here when it rains, not even significantly rains, this whole area floods. So when we're talking about Broomfield Town Square and fixing that, it's not necessarily a fix. And yes, it has been coming for years and years. It will be for another decade. So planning financially, we all know that when we have these projects, when you encumber those funds, you have to encumber all of those funds. That's why we continue to see rollovers every year. Because we, we have to, we have to plan in three to five-year increments. So again, it's important to note that these are not cosmetic structural changes. But they are, and that's a, it's a great question from Councilmember Lim on the stormwater. So we already have folks that are looking at to what degree the stormwater fund would be funding any, any one of these components. But just to clarify, yes, if Broomfield Town Square, for whatever reason, does not move forward, Councilmember Ward, it, it will continue to be our financial responsibility now in the future and from a it, it will continue to be our financial responsibility now in the future and from a maintenance perspective.
Okay, thank you. My next question on that is, as it relates to the underpass itself, is Broomfield Town Square contributing any money to that project specifically? Or is that something that we are taking on entirely? Because obviously there's kind of two, from the picture, there's two different underpasses, you have the panel itself, and then you have the pedestrian underpass.
Through the development review process for the Town Square project, it was a request from staff to add that pedestrian underpass to serve the Town Square project, of course. But it is something that through conversations with the developer, Broomfield is paying for that itself.
Okay. I mean, I kind of feel like since we're putting in the underpass because of that project, they should be contributing to it, but I'll get off that little soapbox. My final question, as it relates to kind of the design of everything, I assume we're going to have to tear up the road, tear up Main Street in which to widen the channels and put in the underpass. Are we going to be doing any sort of road diet measures on Main Street? For that one particular section? Main Street is, from my experience, driving it and riding it is actually rather wide for
I don't know if we've, I don't think, but we've completed the final design for the roadway improvements. That is something we will look at as we're looking at the final design for it.
Thank you. That's fair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from Council? Well, my question, just to clarify, like, Mile High Flood District is matching some of these funds with our, with our contributions. I've served on the Mile High Flood District Board of Directors since 2019, and we're, we get such a small piece of that pie because it's based on revenue and a mill levy. So I know we've, if you look in the memo, we've been banking our funds from Mile High Flood District since 2016 for this project, so it's been funded incrementally. And that's why it takes so long, because we don't get a big allocation. So is the allocation from Mile High Flood District expected to go up or down? I know it kind of fluctuates a little bit since it's
So each year, they, they had to balance where they put funds between the, the studies and maintenance projects and the CIP projects. For the City Park Channel, there is a benefit because a large portion of that is primarily maintenance. We will be able to use both maintenance funds and CIP funds from the Mile High Flood District towards that project. So we are hopeful that will help provide additional funding to it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So next is Council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2025-76. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed Resolution Number 2025-76, amending the intergovernmental agreement IGA with the Mile High Flood District for the Nissan Reservoir Channel Concrete Trail Project.
Thank you. Before asking you for a motion, I want to remind everyone that this item contains an intergovernmental agreement, which requires two-thirds approval of Council. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Leslie?
I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holsen? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, Council, please cast your vote electronically. And Councilmember Nguyen, please state your vote verbally.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All Councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously eight to zero. Thank you all very much. That it? Oh, we have two. That's, thank you. That's why you were staring at me. Well, next is Council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2025-77. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed Resolution Number 2025-77, amending the intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District, City Park Channel, and Main Street improvements.
Thank you. Will the clerk, oh yeah, so it's the same thing. It's a two-thirds approval. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Leslie?
With the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Delgado?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Nguyen, please cast your vote verbally.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All Councilmembers have entered their vote, and those results will be displayed on the screen, too. That passes unanimously eight to zero. Thank you, Ms. Allen and Mr. Dever. The final item under action items this evening is Council's consideration of a resolution regarding the city and county of Broomfield's support for a potential ballot measure of the Front Range Passenger Rail District. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum. This item is a policy statement that arose from a request for future action by Councilmember Ward. So there is no staff presentation. Councilmember Ward, do you have any introductory comments? We can take these votes off the screen if you want, and they, you read.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have just a few things to say. Just kind of as a reminder for everyone, this process started roughly a month and a half ago when I circulated around a draft letter to all of Council outlining the five bullet points that you see in the resolution. Not much has changed really since that letter. Council approved the request for future action earlier in May. And this really is, I think, for me, I felt it was important that the city and county of Broomfield Council take a position to ensure that we have access to Front Range Passenger Rail with a stop because at the time, and currently under plenty documents, we do not have a stop on Front Range Passenger Rail. And to ensure that plan that is put forth by the Front Range Passenger Rail Board of Directors makes meaningful progress for our region and the state of Colorado to meet our greenhouse gas emission reductions, vehicle miles traveled reductions, and as well assist the governor in increasing load share of people using public transportation from, I think it's nine percent to somewhere over twenty-nine percent, if I remember correctly. You have to forgive me, it's about 3:00 AM where I'm at. So that is just kind of an overview of, and a reminder for Council as to why we are here. But with that, I look forward to hearing both from the public and answering any questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Ward. We'll now proceed with public comments. Does anyone want to speak on this issue? Please make your ways to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you. I am Gary Sprung. I live in Boulder, and I'm a member of the Board of the Colorado Rail Passenger Association, also known as Colorail. Our board has not had a chance to vote on this proposed resolution. But I can say that four of us, including our president, oppose the resolution. I ask, I ask you to vote no. We believe the resolution could cause irreparable harm to the ongoing negotiations for joint service and front range passenger rail. It could alienate many stakeholders. The question at hand is primarily money, not policy. We all agree that Colorado and Broomfield need robust passenger rail service. Getting there is the problem. As a resident of Boulder, I am just as frustrated as anyone that the Fast Trax Northwest Line has not been built. We have paid taxes for it since 2005. So how do we get the money to finish Fast Trax and build front range passenger rail? The Colorado Legislature last year helped by enacting two fees that provide some extra dollars toward passenger rail. But it is far from enough to build what we want and need. Passenger rail service needs more money, probably in the form of a sales tax. So all considerations about level of service must weigh costs against voters' willingness to pay. Right now, many voters in Boulder are unwilling to pay because of the Northwest Line problem. So the state has devised a plan to get very limited service going much sooner without any new taxes. Colorail supports that joint service plan. It would combine the new state fees money and Fast Trax funds from RTD. The state has done an excellent job of devising something creative and realistic. I will omit responses to the resolution. I go into more depth in an email submitted to you this afternoon. In general, the demands are unrealistic and too much. I hope you will support the joint service proposal, rather than passing a resolution that makes demands upon an as-yet unknown sales tax ballot referendum. Getting a new tax passed will not be easy. There is a lot of discussion, debate, and negotiating ahead. You might also ask the Board of RTD to support the joint service proposal. We need their commitment to this creative problem-solving endeavor. It gets us started on a solution toward passenger rail for Fast Trax, Broomfield, and transportation in the Colorado Front Range Corridor. Please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Bright. I'm the interim general manager of the Front Range Passenger Rail District. The district was established through Senate Bill 21238 to plan, finance, operate, and maintain an intercity passenger rail service along the Front Range. I'm here tonight on behalf of the district board. On their behalf, I humbly request the council propose any consideration, I'm sorry, the council postpone consideration of Resolution 2025-102. Earlier today, I submitted a letter to the council voicing the Front Range Passenger Rail District Board's desire to share their vision and to clarify a near-term proposal to initiate a starter service. We recognize this region has a long history with rail and transit. I recognize this is a complex conversation. We would welcome the opportunity to work with you through a council work session and thereafter to collaborate with you on a resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Roxy Julal-Lakmar. I don't mind that we go ahead and put our two cents in on this. My idea is that two cents. I don't want no money going towards it. We've put enough money out on RTD. They're not providing anything. We've been losing with RTD in every way, shape, and form. And I have an RTD mini-bus that runs down in front of my house every day to get one customer, and they drive too fast. One of these days, I'm going to jump out and scare the crap out of them. But anyway, I want to do that before the children accidentally do and they, he kills somebody. So I'm all for us putting our two cents on this, but please, no money, and put that in the paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this item? All right, I'll go to my council colleagues next. Any questions for Councilmember Ward or? No? Hands up. Okay. Oh, wait. Okay, who is first? Okay, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm not sure I have any questions. I will. It sounds like there is not staff based on this to ask questions to. I just want to reiterate that we just need to have a partnership, and I'm hoping that tonight, that this could be the start of a partnership and what this means for Broomfield, and I appreciate Austin, or sorry, Commissioner Ward's input into this. I think that we need, back in April is what I asked for, was a study session on this. And that is something that I continually ask for. And so it is my hope that tonight we can talk with the stakeholders that are involved here at CCI, and I know I'm logging in for this particular item. I was not expecting to do so. But I do know that Councilmember Ward has put a lot of effort into transportation, and I just want to honor that, too. I think that he has the ultimate goal of what we all want eventually, and so I don't want to dampen any of that. But what I do want is to realize that the financial implications and the stakeholder-ing that goes into this needs to be held. And so eventually, I think Councilmember Cohen will likely move to postpone indefinitely, just so that we can have a conversation and a study session so that we can understand the stakeholder-ing involved and some past history on this subject. Councilmember Ward, can you attest or just explain what sort of stakeholder-ing work that you've done on this effort and let everyone know the kind of work that you've done and maybe the kind of work that you hope to do as well?
Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Henkel. So in terms of stakeholder-ing, obviously, I have met with as many of you on Council as I possibly could, were willing to engage. I have engaged with a number of the Front Range Passenger Rail Board of Directors, including over the past couple of years. For that matter, Councilmember Sarah Nammala from Westminster, who serves as one of the Dr. Cog representatives on the Front Range Passenger Rail Board. I've chatted and had many conversations with Commissioner Levy, Boulder County, who is one of the governor's appointments. And then I have had the opportunity on occasion to chat with Mayor John Peck of Longmont, but she is one of the other Dr. Cog representatives on the Front Range Passenger Rail Board of Directors. Prior to his leaving, I had conversations with Andy Karssian, who is the former executive director for the Front Range Passenger Rail Board, the Front Range Passenger Rail District, sorry. And then I've had conversations with other elected officials across the region in terms of their their issues or hesitations, or what their kind of vision they'd like to see out of Front Range Passenger Rail and any potential ballot vision that they will have in the future. I won't blame names because we'll be here for a while if I do that, and in the interest of time, I will leave it.
Thank you. And can you just let us know the feedback that you received? I've been talking with Commissioner Rachel Zenzinger and the work that they've done at the legislature on this for quite a while last night about this, and I just wanted to know and understand the feedback that you've received from the people that you've been talking with.
Certainly. So there has been obviously a lot of hesitation with many of the Northwest communities because there is that stigma, if you'd like to call it that, related to RTD's inability to complete Fast Trax's problems so far. And then there are other communities that are incorporated in the Front Range Passenger Rail District who will not have even remotely the possibility of receiving direct service, like much of Adams County, for example. They're just not near the railroad. And so they're not going to receive direct service, but they still would like to have something that allows them to connect with the service, and that would be, you know, connecting bus service and without increased funding, I, from my experience working for RTD, do not see them increasing connectivity of the rail line without that extra funding. That's kind of some of the main points. I think another big one is the hesitation about will people actually use the service that people have, that the Front Range Passenger Rail Board of Directors is currently studying under the preliminary alternative analysis. And there have been a number of people that have expressed concern about whether or not the frequency is viable for most people to use.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ward. I have no more questions, but just want to reiterate the fact that I think, I think more, a lot more stakeholder needs to happen, because this is a partner Because this is a partnership, we have asked over many years to develop more of a partnership. And so I think this is better appropriated as a, instead of a resolution, but as a letter. And I appreciate Councilmember Ward's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ward, I guess, you know, some context. I've been in Europe for the past few weeks, and I've seen the progress that the Europeans have had with mass transit, public transportation. And I can see that, yeah, we need public transit. We need it now. But I guess my question stems is, what was the goal for this resolution? And as we've heard from public comment through some emails, the concerns for a lot of folks is that this would be doing more damage than good. And so I guess my question is, how would you respond to that? Especially because we were hearing a lot of, you know, concerns on that front.
Thank you, Councilmember Winn. And thank you, Mayor. As I stated when I gave kind of the introduction, the intent of this resolution, which originated as a letter, was for Broomfield and also other communities in the Northwest Region in particular to provide a statement of what they're looking for when it comes to what future rail service should look like along, not just the Northwest segment, but along the front range entirely, knowing that we're all in many ways interconnected. As it relates to the kind of the skepticism or the fear that this will do more harm than good, I have heard many different reasons as to, or many different ways this could be harmful from RTD won't sign the IGA, which I've had conversations with board members up through. You know, early this morning, in mountain time slash midday mountain time, that RTD has not necessarily taken a formal look at this. And their hesitations may lie with the terms of the agreement and not what necessarily Broomfield has to say. And by terms, I mean voting mechanisms for that IGA contributions, planning, who gets that kind of process, say, et cetera. And then other, I mean, other issues that I've heard come up relate to whether the freight railroads will look at this. How the government's going to look at this from a federal funding standpoint. And I think for, for me, I have been able to bifurcate or separate out the two issues where, you know, joint service was something that the state legislature created after the fact in a way to expedite Northwest Rail in at least some meaningful capacity while also being able to hopefully provide a starter service that would gain public support for a future Front Range Passenger Rail ballot measure. Whereas Front Range, this and that joint service is not looking at increasing or asking builders for a tax increase to fund. It's going to be using all new revenue that the state legislature has allocated through SB 24-184 and SB 24-230, along with a partnership with RTD for some of their ISO, which stands for the Transitransit Savings Account revenue that they have set aside, along with any reserves that the RTD Board of Directors may feel comfortable allocating for such a project. And Front Range Passenger Rail, on the other hand, is going to need a successful ballot measure in order for them to implement any sort of increases of service to what joint service is proposing. And for me, I've been able to separate that out. Obviously, other people either don't or can't, and that's, I don't necessarily at this time have a good answer for that.
So I appreciate your, your, you know, talking, outlining why this resolution was brought up. I think this is a difficult case because I think a lot of us are on the same side. And overall, I appreciate your answer and your thoughtfulness. And again, I think most of us do want to have public transit. Look, you know, we wanted the promise from 2004 of having something. So I have no further questions, Mayor. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ward.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Winn. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. And as teased by Councilmember Henkel, I had communicated plans to make a motion to table or postpone this motion, this resolution. And several councilmembers as well to Councilmember Ward, though I now realize it must have been midnight his time. So he may not have seen it. But I did want to, as Councilmember Henkel said, and Councilmember Winn, I do appreciate everything Councilmember Ward has done to raise this issue, and I think has succeeded with an exclamation point in communicating to stakeholders that Broomfield's not happy and is very resistant to anybody coming to us to say, let's raise your taxes, we'll deliver transit, because we've fallen for that one before. So I think what you're seeking to do has been successful and will resonate beyond this meeting into the development of this intergovernment relations agreement. So what I'd like to ask in light of the offer from Ms. Bright this afternoon for us coming to come back to council for a full study session on transit in the front range and in Broomfield, would you be interested or willing to either withdraw the resolution or support a postponement to a study session where we can more fully discuss this issue and you can raise the issues you have as well as the other councilmembers can?
Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, for the question. I am perfectly fine with having Front Range Passenger Rail and Ms. Bright come back to Broomfield for a study session and provide updates and not questions. However, I am standing firm in my my resolution, predominantly because you all have had notice for a month and a half that these were the things that were going to be in the resolution and have expressed no concerns, other than Councilmember Henkel really prior to this meeting. And so I am not withdrawing the resolution.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, I think it would be fair to say a number of us on council are waiting to see the text of the resolution to see what it actually said. Since the original discussion was a request for action to bring a resolution forward. And I think having read the resolution, and I appreciate all the staff work that went into it, I know that took some time, that in my perspective, it's premature and perhaps overly prescriptive, since there's so much that we don't know yet. And I'm not willing to go on record with demands of how many stops and how often they need to be at this point. I think it would behoove us to postpone this and hear more from Ms. Bright and the Passenger Rail District. And it would also be good for residents as well to learn more about what people are thinking about and would like to move forward with in terms of transit in this area. So if this is the appropriate time, I would make a motion that we postpone this resolution, any action on this resolution to a date uncertain post, and schedule a study session with the Front Range Passenger Rail District and other transit representatives so we can more fully discuss this topic.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Mayor, we need the master, the top motion done first. So after the discussion part is done, or I guess the Q and A part with the traditionally would have been staff here, it's Councilmember Ward.
When I ask for discussion is when you raise your hand and make that motion.
Okay. Hopefully, you recorded that and just play it back. I don't think I can repeat it.
Do it again.
Okay.
Councilmember Henkel, did you have a question? No, okay.
No, I'm just going to second his motion.
Okay. Well, it wasn't a motion yet, so hold your, hold your powder. Next is council's, oh, are there any more questions first? Let's get that out of the way. All right. See, no further questions. Next is council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2025-102. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed Resolution Number 2025-102 regarding the city and county of Broomfield's support for a potential ballot measure of the Front Range Passenger Rail District.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Is the zoom on? Councilmember Delgado.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Anybody can, is Ward on there?
Yes, I have my hand raised. I'll second.
I can't see you. Okay, I figured that would be you. All right. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cohen?
I'll attempt this. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this resolution indefinitely and schedule a study session with the Passenger Rail District for more fully discuss transit options for Broomfield.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel?
Second.
Thank you. As a reminder, our new council rules limit discussion on an amendment to three minutes for the sponsor, one minute for each speaker, and then it ends for one minute for the sponsor. So Councilmember Ward, would you like to give any comment on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything else to add. I think I've said everything as a rebuttal to Councilmember Cohen. The five bullet points you see in the current resolution are the same five bullet points that were presented in the letter. So really, nothing has changed. And for me, in much as I have followed this, I, I do not think a study session is going to enlighten council to something that I think you will see comes from this resolution that there is no official stop for Broomfield as of yet by the Front Range Passenger Rail Board of Directors on their SDP for this development plan. We, I do not think the frequency is adequate to meet any of the goals, which is substantially meet the goals, I should say, that the governor has laid out and the state legislature has laid out with gas reduction, vehicle miles traveled reduction, and increases in public transit usage. And I think they have not necessarily taken into account connectivity to and from the stations themselves that the local public transit systems are, cannot because of funding or will not in some cases provide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holschen?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything Councilmember Ward just said. I do think that, that nothing in the service that we're being offered is adequate. And I absolutely agree with every single goal that he has put forward. But I also, this, this resolution to me is the enemy being, the perfect being, being the enemy, the good. It is, we have to get, get the starter service started before we can move forward. And one issue I have with, with this prescription of specific goal, uh, service levels is that there is no money at the state level to pay for that right now. And demanding things without identifying a revenue stream is the cart before the horse. So I'm going to support Councilmember Cohen's motion to postpone. But I want to reiterate, I agree with everything Councilmember Ward has put forward in this resolution. Broomfield does deserve service. Broomfield does deserve rail. Rail is a, if you build it, they will come type of thing. You have to build it in order to get the transit. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo that I recognize that, you know, this is a service. This is something that all of us want. I do agree that maybe a study session might not be a necessary desire for more staff time, more work, just because we can recognize that a lot of this is still in flux. I mean, we don't even know when a lot of these agreements will be done. And I think that I want to echo Councilmember Marshall Ocean's thoughts that, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of speculation. And I think that's just the decisions that have not been made yet. Yes, we can make a stand. I think one thing we can all agree on is that we want a passenger rail system that goes through Denver to Boulder, and that Broomfield gets a stop or two. But end of the day, I think that maybe we don't need a study session. So that's just me thinking. Maybe this is a 4:00 AM brain here. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I, this has been really tough as we're going through this whole process, because I did support putting forward the concerns that Councilmember Ward was raising, because if we don't make our voices heard, heard, and we don't note that we are being missed on that stop as, as are others, that it really made sense to put forward, I believe it started, I recall, as a letter. And then it was changed from the letter to the resolution. So, and I thought maybe go back to the letter, but that doesn't sound like it's even feasible. This was to avoid the two-step process. So, so I don't know. I wish you could go back and start that over again and just find this way to say, this is what we want. I think our concerns have been very well heard. I, and I did not know that this would cause so much concern until this past Friday, late this past Friday afternoon. I might have been the one that received that first call. And, and I appreciate all the conversations I have with Councilmember Ward and others, but there just didn't seem to be any language that we could put in there that alleviated the concerns. I don't want us to be the reason why the IGA doesn't get created between RTD, FRPR, and all the entities because we stress that we need these stops in the service. So I will, I'm, I'm good to postpone. And, and I was told that the best time to weigh in is once the negotiations are done, and we actually have something to weigh in on specific. So that, that seems to be the real next step. This study session is new. I haven't heard about that until like just recently. I don't know what the study session would do other than provide opportunities to have these discussions and make sure that they're hearing the concerns that they've already heard. So I'm, I'm open to that, but I just want to thank Councilmember Ward for advocating for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Rogers real quick. She needed to clarify the letter resolution.
Yeah, there's been some discussion this evening about a letter being, being either different or substantively a different type of advocacy document. I was the one, I was a staff member who wrote the resolution with Councilmember Ward after the request for future action was directed by council. The letter had the same substance in it and would have had a resolution saying, council approves this letter to be sent to... dot, dot, dot. It was my suggestion, and I wanted to take responsibility for that, of saying, why don't we just put the text in a resolution format, and then we just have one document and less to get separated on the way. So I just want to clarify that. I'm not advocating for one point or the other, but I just want to acknowledge that a letter would have still had a resolution and the substance probably would have been the same. So this idea that a letter, if council did direct staff to go forward with a letter, I would still be drafting a resolution saying council supports this letter that's attached. Thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Was that all in Councilmember Anderson? Okay, Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for all the input tonight. We have some very thoughtful council members, and I'm very proud of your work. I wanted to just read off the email that I wrote to Councilmember Ward that he had mentioned when he first, you know, emailed all of us, and then he wanted more feedback. I think it's just really important to really give feedback if someone has an idea. I will read off what I wrote to him, and I just said, thank you for this email, Austin. I appreciate your work on this. As I know, you specialize in transportation, and many of us don't. So we do rely on Councilmember Ward for a lot of his work in this area. "I agree with the amount and places for the stops. While I understand the amount of trips you feel are inadequate, it is my understanding that quadrupling the trips would increase costs tremendously and affect the service development plan. So I agree with the stops. I just worry about the cost of adding trains and frequency and wondering if having 55 trains would add up to the frequency. And I said, I think this math teacher wants to see the math behind the demands. Additionally, I feel that we need an entire study session to understand Front Range Passenger Rail versus just a presentation." So I said, so I would love to discuss this at a study session so we can better understand the cost.
All right. These are one-minute times. Your minutes.
Oh, one minute? Yeah. I thought we were three minutes. Okay.
Not at this point.
I hear you. What I want to say is just, I just want to thank Councilmember Ward for his actions. And I think we can tease away the stops. Like, I think this is where people want to meet us in the middle. And I see a lot of advocacy in all these different realms, and so I would like to see that advocacy in the agreements, like Councilmember Anderson wrote and mentioned tonight, sorry, and talk with Sarah with our transportation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We got a lot of people lined up now. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Just one minute, just real quickly. I think real three points. The study session value is that The study session value is that like tonight, we heard from Mr. Sprung, who mentioned something that I think will get a lot of people's attention, that there'll be a tax request going forward. So I think any kind of public interaction opportunities to ask questions and learn more about what's being planned is useful for the community to clearly understand what's being discussed. And it gets helpful for us to also recognize that this isn't a Broomfield plan. Anything that comes forward is going to be a multi-governmental process and multi-governmental funding. And we need to be a partner to that. That doesn't mean we are committed to it, but we need to be partners with it. We're not going to be able to fund this ourselves at all. That transit's just not something within our capability alone. So I think further discussion is worthwhile. Maybe at some point, I think Mr. Councilmember Ward's letter or resolution will ripen to the point where it's the right time to state our preferences, but I think it's premature at this point. Thank you.
Wow, you timed that perfectly. It goes quick, right? Councilmember Lim.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say that I do appreciate, very much appreciate Councilmember Ward's uh resolution. Um, I agree with his points. I think that it would be beneficial to have the study session. Um, and I would like to point out that when the state writes us letters that encourage us to continue dialogue on these kinds of issues that Broomfield has often felt on recent matters that the state has not listened to Broomfield. So we are being rather generous, I would say, in our efforts to meet the state halfway. And we hope that the state does continue to listen to us further. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Councilmember Lim. Councilmember Leslie.
No comment. Thank you.
Oh, you just pressed your button? Oh. Okay, never mind then. Any other discussion from council? Uh, well, real quickly, um, you know, there was not even a thing called joint service a few months ago. This only came up when uh Adams County, Broomfield County, we both said, whoa, what you want our support for this, but we're going to be waving at that train going straight from Denver to Boulder. So it helps to speak out. I mean, this is what engagement is all about. If we wouldn't have spoken up, then we wouldn't be having a joint service conversation. So I appreciate Councilmember Ward's efforts in this area. Um, and I and I do agree that, you know, Broomfield has not gotten our um our money's worth for any of these investments it for RTD. Uh, we've already paid, what, ninety-five million dollars to Fast Tracks. And we have one bus that doesn't even run regularly called the Flatiron Flyer. It's not been restored to pre-pandemic level. So you know, we have to speak up or you don't get anything. And I appreciate us speaking up um because now we started the conversation. So it did serve that purpose. So thank you, Councilmember Ward. All right. Moving on. Before we go to a vote on the motion, uh we did that. So we're going to vote on Councilmember Cohen's motion. We have a second uh to postpone this and to uh look forward to inviting the Front Range Passenger Rail folks back to discuss our concerns further. All right. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Winn, please cast your vote verbally for Councilmember Cohen's motion.
I vote no.
You vote no on the on the council member? Wait, is this Winn?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was asking for Winn first.
This is Winn? Hi, hi?
I can't see you, so I don't know. Okay, how do you vote on the on Councilmember Cohen's motion?
I vote no on the amendment.
Okay. And then Councilmember Ward?
No.
No. All council members, so Councilmember Henkel.
Yes.
Okay. Now all council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That motion passes six to three. So does that mean, Ms. Rogers, that the resolution is not being voted on?
Yes, that's exactly what it means. The resolution has not failed. It's just not going to be voted on until it returns to the table.
All right, sounds good. Well, I appreciate the robust discussion and engagement from our partners and all of the work that Councilmember Ward has been doing on our behalf. So that's the end of that item. There are no mayor or council member requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my colleagues or staff? And seeing none, the business meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.